To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Girl call, please.
Mayor Grimonturn.
Here.
Alderman Calvo. Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Present.
Alderman Huck.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ruzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Approve the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. I think we'll go right into Martin's report. Yeah, there's nobody here. No, he's really here from something that's on the agenda, so. If I can... You've got a copy of his report there, and I guess now would be as good a time as any since he brought up there, as far as talk a little bit about the last meeting or the special meeting, the hearing and the dogs. We did meet with Judge Hulscamp and prosecuting attorney and police chief, assistant police chief, and Martin and I met to talk about comments and things that we can do to improve. And I wanted to run some of those by you as far as what we're looking at, as far as making changes with the ordinance goes. One of the first things, simple things to do, which Eric wanted to do is change the definition as far as having control over the animal, make sure that it's on a leash. Just a wording change. We looked at some other ordinances from a few other towns and tried to pick a few things off of there, and, you know, I believe, again, as I think everybody would agree, the consensus of the hearing was it's truly the owner's responsibility and responsible ownership, is what this whole thing is about. So, we were looking at first offense for dogs at large, a minimum of $100 to a maximum of $500. Second offense, 200 to 500, and the third offense, 300 to 500, which is a substantial increase in what we've got currently.
So, the difference would be between 1 and 5, you think, for first offense?
Minimum of 100 and a maximum of 500.
Right, so it just depended on what exactly was the situation at the time, depending on severity of it or whatever?
Right, and certainly the prosecutor or the judge will still have discretion if it's...you know, things happen sometimes, some things break and dogs get loose, and it's just an accident, but certainly what we want to try to accomplish here is the repeat offenders and the people that have dangerous animals that do get loose, so. The next thing was actually today we have this dangerous dog, the way the ordinance is today, you have a potentially dangerous dog and then it gets ruled as a dangerous dog if it does certain things. We were going to...if the dog, right now, if the dog has a bite, if it bites somebody or is aggressive towards somebody, it kind of gets a second chance. We were going to say if the dog bites somebody, it becomes a dangerous dog or a dangerous animal. At that point, the dog would either be destroyed, have to move out of the city limits. We talked about, which somebody brought up in the meeting, as far as it going to obedience school, and certainly do some more studying about that, but the only thing, we put that in the ordinance, we've got to have somewhere that's consistent. Where do you go? It's got to be certified by somebody, not just anybody could be able to do that, so that might get a little complicated.
I wouldn't put that in the ordinance, no.
I don't see that as a deterrent anyway.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no way I'd put that in the ordinance.
All right, scrap that idea. And then, and at the same time, and the other was, it would go into this, become that dangerous dog that would go into this very restrictive containment area that was spelled out in the ordinance, that had to be caged so big and have a roof and all of those kinds of things on it. So, those were, is what would happen if the dog did end up biting somebody or is aggressive towards somebody. Person could still, the police department or Martin, still could deem a dog a potentially dangerous dog according to the ordinance. If we have a dog that does get out and has been aggressive towards some people, that they could still call it a potentially dangerous dog, the way the current ordinance is, but if it does actually do anything to another animal or bites somebody, the other thing about that would be the dog would remain impounded until whatever the owner was going to do with it, get rid of it, destroy it, or build a containment structure for it. The dog would remain impounded at the owner's expense until that was done. It wasn't like he could go get the dog out and say, "Sure, I'm going to do this," or until he goes to court, you know, the dog, we wouldn't want to...because that is one of the things I think we found that maybe happening today, and Eric will go into some of the other things that he's working with the sheriff's department on.
So, impoundment, you mean at the sheriff's department?
Right.
And they would have to pay like room and board?
Yeah, we haven't discussed that issue with him, but yes. Dogs today are not being released without the police department, without the police department saying it's okay. I don't want to take what Eric's got to say out of that, but I just had that written down. One thing that Frankie's a little under the weather, called me and talked a little bit about today, was I thought was a great idea, was if we can look at something on our website where people could report, and everybody's got a camera with them now, they're carrying them with it, they could take a picture of dogs running loose and actually, I mean, one of the issues I think we've got is people call in, and we go out to look for them and can't find them, and so, but if people could take pictures of it, send it in to either the police department or to Martin, and we could actually keep maybe better track of these and write tickets based on those reports. So, we're going to work on, see if there's a way we can do that, report that was over the internet. Eric, you want to comment?
Just to be clear on that, we're talking dangerous dogs in general, not breed specific.
Right.
It's any dog can be deemed a dangerous dog.
Right, I think everybody agrees that we weren't going to go that other direction for that.
Yeah, as we've talked about in the meetings in the past, you know, obviously sometimes it takes some type of incident to realize the breakdowns that we have. We've certainly tightened the reins as far as our guys are concerned with following up, again, you know, in years past, if the dog was seized in the city limits, the sheriff's department handled all that, the release of the dog, and so, there was, oftentimes, the owner would come to collect the dog and we weren't able to contact them to issue the summons. We've closed that gap with the sheriff's department, just in their notification of us, anytime a dog within the city limits is impounded, we'll be notified and we'll cite the owners, you know, prior to the animal's release. As the mayor said, you know, we look to tighten up our, tightening up our vicious animal ordinance, taking out the dog bite as a potentially dangerous, but still leaving, if the dog gets out and chases anybody or shows any type of aggression or, you know, any of these steps, then it's automatically on this list and Martin will start his procedure as far as the notification of the dangerous animal and getting that ordinance underway. Looking at the animal licensing, again, our officers are taking a closer look at that and just trying to tighten that up a little bit. And again, as much as anything, it's just the awareness, raising the awareness and letting citizens know that it is a requirement, that you have to have the tag on it, it has to be on the animal, so. Again, it's just a matter of, for us, being able to verify that the dog has its vaccinations and is safe, and it just kind of gives us the ability to have some oversight in that, should there be an incident, again, but just a little better way to track some of that progress.
The enforcement has been up?
Yes.
Quite a bit, I understand.
Yes.
Eric, could you guys comment? I know in a couple weeks, it wasn't this last week, maybe the week before, there was a report, I think in a paper, that it's 200 and something animal calls.
Yes.
Just those, I think some people may be under the impression that there was 200 and something calls about dogs running loose, but explain what that whole category is.
It's anything, anything animal related. If you have a skunk in your yard, if you have a dead possum laying out in the middle of the street, you know, dispatch only will classify that under an animal call. So, if Deputy Barton is releasing a dog and somebody needs to meet him up there, they call dispatch and say, "I need to meet with an officer to get a dog out of impound," that goes under an animal call, under the city's call log. In addition, there were claims with the animal that has brought all this up, that was on Fifth Street, about being called 30 some times over the dog, and, you know, our records indicate there were seven calls in the last two years in that area about a dog. I don't have the call details as far as if it was even about that dog, but, you know, we certainly, that was the first time I had been aware of the animal up there, and again, the animal control was on scene and was looking for that dog with Mr. Browning, with the reporting party on that, before the dog bite happened, so it's not like he failed to respond or that, you know, he was completely negligent. They, the animal control officer was on duty that day, responded to the area, got with the reporting party, they looked for the dog and couldn't find them prior to the bite. So, again, we are certainly taking every precaution and every step that we can take to ensure the safety of the citizens, and again, obviously, this is kind of a high priority for the city right now, and, you know, we're certainly taking it seriously and taking the enforcement actions that we can take.
Any more, we'll come back with some changes in the ordinance, any suggestions that you guys could got?
Sounds like you've covered it really well, actually, I mean, what you said, and it's pretty much what we talked about in the meeting.
Okay. Okay, anything else, comments on Martin's report? We've gentleman here from Gilmore Bell to talk about the refinancing, so he can answer questions when we come to that. Okay. Steve, you're first on the list.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Steve.
All right. I reported a few months back that we still have not received our wastewater plant permit. That was applied for in November of 2013. I spoke with DNR, and they said, they issued us a draft permit, finally, and it possibly will go into full effect in January of 2017.
What takes a while?
DNR.
Oh, all right.
You have to be in a hurry to get them their stuff. They don't have to be in a hurry to get to you, so. So, we will have a new permit come sometime first of the year, so. I've looked over the draft, there's very little changes. They did add two sampling locations, we'll have to sample upstream and downstream of the wastewater plant.
Typically, what kind of preferences could you have? You've got just clean water flowing one way and then real good clean water flowing past too, right?
Yeah, it's all clean.
Yeah, well, after the...
Yes. The only thing they're checking for is nitrogen and phosphorus, upstream and downstream, everything else is fine.
Yeah.
So, as long as they know, well, I assume they're the regulating body, and they know you're operating more or less with a temporary permit?
Yeah, once, with DNR, once your permit expires, you just run off that existing permit until DNR gets you your new one.
Oh, okay, okay.
One other thing, as you've seen on the past few reports, the UV modules for the UV system at the wastewater plant, I sent those in in June to Suez, that's the manufacturer that made them. They finally got back with me the other day on a price for the repairs of those five modules, and it's $12,000, any numbers in here?
Yeah, totally.
Just over $12,000, it's on the agenda. We're running, we're passing our samples, but we are required by DNR and EPA and the state of Missouri to operate that unit at full capacity, so.
Those you shut down in the winter, is that right?
Yes, yes, those are shut down from October 31st to April 1st. It's over my spending limit, so I've got it on the agenda, I've got to hope.
That just comes out of your repair budget, all right? Okay. Any questions?
Yeah. Steve, why are we losing so many people?
Well, that's question one, one individual's who wanted to work for another local company. The other one is going for more money, so.
Is there a problem with what's going on? But what we have right now, they're just, they're even for better money.
Yeah.
Or is there a problem with...
I mean, if I could offer them $5 more an hour, they'd stay, I mean, wouldn't go anywhere.
How many, we lose, two or three?
Two. Two transferred to another Lions division, and one will be going to another local company.
Okay, so we lost three people.
Yeah, and I say that, but that's this year, so.
Calendar year?
Mm-hmm.
Or when? Are you taking applications for people right now?
I am.
Are we running okay with just, well, you got you and Matt, is that it?
Actually, I'm not down any employees right now. I'm accepting applications contingent on these guys leaving.
Oh, okay, so they have left here?
Yeah, I'm still full staff right now.
All right, okay.
So, Lions is working with you before they transfer these, at least those two?
Yeah, yeah, we'll be staff before they transfer them.
It seems a little strange to me that we've lost three people in the last year. You know?
What can we do?
No, I know. I hate to see that, I really do. Don't like to see that turnover. That's all I have.
Any other questions? All right, thanks, Steve.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Steve.
Good evening, everyone. Um, so, you have my report in front of you. I'd like to draw your attention to the bar chart on the back of the first page. You could see that in the month of August, we had a total of 26, 35 guests through the Welcome Center. That was down from August of last year. The majority of that difference was, of course, Shirdifet weekend. I think that weekend alone, we were down in count more than 500 people over the course of the weekend, just at the Welcome Center, you know, what it was like for that weekend all over town, so just wanted to point that out. But because we were pretty strong prior to that, we're still at, for the calendar year to date, we're still up at a little bit over 2% over last year. So, we're hoping to have a really strong September and close up with a really strong last quarter. We have some great things coming up. First of all, I want to point out before I go into events that we did before Shirdifet weekend, we replaced, if any of you travel 55 on a regular basis, when you get off at the exit where Dairy Queen and southbound fuel are, there is, as you go up those exit ramps, there has always been a St. Genevieve sign on your right-hand side as you go up the exit ramp, whether you're northbound or southbound. Those were falling into a bit of disrepair, and there was a storm this summer that sort of knocked one sideways, so we had both of those completely redone and restored, and those new signs were installed the week of Shirdifet, so they're looking good again. If you go out to Highway B towards Wine Country for any reason, be on the lookout for a new sign at Highway B as you're coming back towards St. Genevieve. If you've left Wine Country, you're coming back to the interstate, it makes a sharp left-hand turn there right before you get to 55, and there's a sign straight ahead of you. It's actually a triangle sign with two faces for north and southbound 55, the third shorter sign faces Highway B, and I was able to get a contract on that sign, and very soon it's going to say, "Visit French Colonial, St. Genevieve," and be encouraging Wine Country guests to come and spend some time in the downtown attractions on their next visit, we hope. So, kind of keep an eye out for that. Upcoming events, we have, I included a couple of sheets in your packet for you because there are a couple of very unique events coming up that have to do with our unique history here. But first of all, this Friday, tomorrow night, is the Fourth Friday Art Walk sponsored by St. Genevieve Downtown Renewal. We will also have an open house for a couple of the buildings that actually are open and available for rent or sale. There's not much open in the downtown right now. We have several new businesses that are coming in, in the downtown, but the ones that are interested to participate will be open tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30. So, if you've not been in Station 2 for a while, they're going to be participating, so watch for the balloons there, and that'll be during Art Walk, which we have more people circulating throughout the downtown. And in addition to that, it is the plein air event. You might have seen artists with easels in downtown this weekend, or this, during this week. It will culminate tomorrow evening and on Saturday and Sunday with the art show and sale, and there will be awards given out during that whole period. On Saturday is a Civil War Living History event at the Moses Austin Park. I included a write-up about that event because it's kind of interesting, if you've heard about the bank robbery that was held in St. Genevieve way back in the day by Jesse James and his gang, they're going to do a reenactment of that, which is always kind of fun. They're going to do it at Main and Merchant Streets, so right downtown. And then there's also, at Moses Austin Park, there's going to be a reenactment of like a Civil War Living History encampment there. And so, they'll have information on people from St. Genevieve County that are actually on the records of, as having participated in the Civil War period, so you might find out that you had an ancestor that was either a rebel or a Yankee. So, that could be a fun event. And the second one I wanted to draw your attention to, this is the smaller sheet that's in your packet. Every year, St. Genevieve hosts a Fall History Conference, and this year it will be jointly sponsored between our local Historic Preservation Group, the Foundation for Restoration of St. Genevieve, and a nationwide organization called the Center for French Colonial Studies. So, this will be happening on September 29th through October 2nd. This, the normal history conference is about 50, 60 people, and we'll have, I think there's over 110 registered already, and they'll be coming in, there'll be professors from various places coming in to attend this event. And a couple of the interesting things on their program, there's going to be a summary of some of the recent archaeological activities that have been happening at the Bull Duke House, both the summer of 2015 and this summer, there were archaeological digs going on on the Bull Duke properties, and there'll be a report out on that and some of the highlights. And then also, of course, you've heard about it multiple times, but for the people visiting St. Genevieve, an informational session by Tim Good from the National Park Service on the potential for the national park site here in St. Genevieve. So, that's just some of the fun things coming up. Oh, and it's also Bike and Badge Weekend this weekend for the Backstoppers Organization, so you'll see them out and about, too.
All right, Colleen.
Oh, I saw the cat. Did we put that cat up for them?
So, and they'll be crossing, they cross on the ferry, you know, to go over to Illinois, and they do kind of a ride through and around back to Munganest, so.
That's Sunday, eh?
Yes.
Any questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Hi.
That's right.
So, you've got my staff report. The only things that I wanted to add with last month, when I was here, we had talked about putting a group of people together for a committee to discuss the design guidelines.
Right.
We have done that. We have two members of the Board of Aldermen, we have two from the Downtown Renewal, two from, well, myself and Bob Bonnell, Mayor, and Martin, and two from the Heritage Commission, and then we asked Joe Rozier as well. And so, we have a meeting set up for next Tuesday evening at 5:30 here, and it would just be an informal meeting to go over those items. Randy and Bob Donovan.
Is that open to the public or is that just for us?
It's really, it's just a...
Okay.
Yeah, it's just a meeting to go over those things.
How are we doing on weeks, kiddo?
Well, it's ongoing, every day, even on the weekends, it seems like they're, I'm always driving around seeing them.
And how are we doing on the number 42 or...
Actually, we have moved on to the building, and I've sent her a letter, and her attorney a letter, and she's given until October 7th to give us a timeline as to when the building, you know, things will be taken care of.
The Hotop property, or the house burnt? That sold at the initial round of the courthouse tax cell. Of course, that doesn't give the people who bought it any right to the property until they, you know, finally own the property. And one of the things they're going to have to do is negotiate with us about the cleanup bill that we have. It appears from the road, they have laid down some filter cloth and put a big gravel parking lot on the property and the parking boat, they've already taken it over.
Okay.
And actually, you know, putting stuff on the ground, and we probably need to visit with them and just let them know that you don't own this property yet. I don't see their family doing anything, but I think they've got quite a tour to get with us and negotiate what we do to get that lien off that deed. I saw the big gravel parking lot they put in, right on the...
That wouldn't be the house next door?
Ah, it is the house next door, but in the big gravel parking lot on the hotel.
Okay, I'll check it out.
Yeah, I hope I'm wrong, but that's what it looks like.
Okay. As far as meetings, it was really, it's been quiet this month, there haven't been just, yeah, sometimes, sometimes it is. And I got LPA training, got it finished, so we now have two, myself and Martin are both LP certified. We are going to be filling out an application to try to get funds to assist with a footbridge here at the Fourth Street Bridge, and we have till November 1st to get that application in, and with the assistance of the fire department and the bus service, we were able to get some good photographs of how tight it is through there with having that sidewalk on the bridge, you know, so. That's pretty well all I have. Anyone have anything else for me? Thank you.
Good work.
Thanks, Carl.
Doesn't look like we've got any public comments from anybody, I think, any reports from the board. Okay, going to the minutes of September the 8th.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And here comes a closed session of September the 8th.
I didn't see that.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session for Thursday, September the 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Treasurers' report for August. No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay, Resolution 2016-34, resolution opposing Don Arash through the St. Genevieve Tourism Advisory.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Okay, thank you. Old Business Bill Number 3123, Secretary.
An ordinance approving the budget for the city of St. Genevieve for fiscal year 2017.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4123 now becomes ordinance 4061.
Thank you, Bill Number 4124.
An ordinance permitting the city of St. Genevieve, Mississippi, to authorize the participation in the Energy Loan Program of the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Energy, and the execution of a loan agreement and promissory note to provide funds to finance the installation or construction of energy conservation measures.
Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Pam needs to get this in before the next meeting, so can we...
Make a motion for a second reading of Bill Number 4127.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, second reading, Bill Number 4127.
An ordinance of the governing body of the city of St. Genevieve, Mississippi, authorizing the participation in the Energy Loan Program of the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Energy, and the execution of a loan agreement and promissory note to provide funds to finance the installation or construction of energy conservation measures.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4127 now becomes ordinance 4063.
Thank you, Bill Number 4128, first reading.
An ordinance approving change order number one and the amount of a credit of $25,369.23 and a final contract amount of $344,679.86 on the contract with Woffey Cement Finishing Incorporated of Perryville, Missouri for the St. Genevieve River Beautification and Hiking Trail Project Number STP 9900025.
Are we done with this now, Dick?
Yes. They, the state wants us to, it's been going on for so long, they want to get it closed out.
I make a motion to approve Bill Number 4128.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And because of that, they are...
I make a motion to have second reading of Bill Number 4128.
Second.
And roll call.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4127 now becomes ordinance 4063.
Thank you, Bill Number 4128, first reading.
An ordinance approving change order number one and the amount of a credit of $25,369.23 and a final contract amount of $344,679.86 on the contract with Woffey Cement Finishing Incorporated of Perryville, Missouri for the St. Genevieve River Beautification and Hiking Trail Project Number STP 9900025.
Are we done with this now, Dick?
Yes. They, the state wants us to, it's been going on for so long, they want to get it closed out.
I make a motion to approve Bill Number 4128.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And because of that, they are...
I make a motion to have second reading of Bill Number 4128.
Second.
All in favor, second reading of 4128?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, Bill Number 4128.
An ordinance approving change order number one and the amount of a credit of $25,369.23 and a final contract amount of $344,679.86 on the contract with Woffey Cement Finishing Incorporated of Perryville, Missouri for the St. Genevieve River Beautification and Hiking Trail Project Number STP 9900025.
Move through.
Second.
And roll call.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4128 now becomes ordinance 4064.
Thank you. Bill Number 4129, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city of St. Genevieve, Mississippi, to enter into a lease purchase transaction, the proceeds of which will be used to pay the cost of refunding all of the city's outstanding refunding certificates of participation, city of St. Genevieve, Mississippi, leasing Series 2011, and authorizing the execution of certain documents and actions in connection therewith.
We have with us tonight Eric Creach from Gilmore Bell to answer any questions about refinancing that you guys might have. This was one that, I think those original notes were issued in 2005, something like that. And then we redid them again because of interest rates in 2011 and saved some money. And we figured out again that we could refinance and reissue them again and save some more money.
How much can we save? $190,000? Is that what I read somewhere?
It was on Martin's report. Eric, you want to just comment on, like, a hundred?
Yes, thank you for having us, for having me here tonight. The savings ended up being $190,920 over the remaining nine years of this term's worth of payoff in 2025, just like the Series 2011s were intended to do originally. Your interest rate, if you are interested, is 1.894% for that nine-year period, fixed for that entire time.
That is fixed.
That is fixed. So you will be saving. I think Joy Howard had been here maybe a month or so ago talking about that, and she was projecting savings when she was initially starting this of around $160,000. So the bids came in, you received five bids from local banks to purchase these, and the low bid coming in at the 1.894% results in that $190,000 savings. Pretty good. Yep. Just when we couldn't, interest rates could get any lower, they keep getting lower, so...
Anything else for Eric? They come down here and...
Thank you.
It's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We don't need two of them on this one. Okay, Bill Number 4130, first reading.
An ordinance authorizing repairs and replacement of the UV system at the sewer treatment plant by Suez Treatment Solutions in an amount not to exceed $12,421.70.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we would like to try to get this done.
Motion for a second.
All in favor, second reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second reading, Bill Number 4130.
An ordinance authorizing repairs and replacement of the UV system at the sewer treatment plant by Suez Treatment Solutions in an amount not to exceed $12,421.70.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4130 now becomes ordinance 4065.
Okay, thank you. I think as you all probably seen that Joker's got the low bid on resurfacing to Market Street. Well, Martin met with, I think Martin met with him yesterday, I guess to talk about the schedule. Steve has got all of the riders in for the utilities. As far as Chadwell goes, we don't know what that, I mean, the estimated cost was going to be more than what we had left over in those funds and trying to get it done this year. By the time we get it, it's going to have to be designed by an engineer because MoDOT's got to approve the entrance. So what we did, Martin and I talked, and we are proceeding ahead with getting the engineering done. Don't think we can get it actually, the project done before, and before we, before the weather would get crummy. So we're going to at least go ahead and get the engineering done where we can do something with it next spring, so. But I think we are still going to look at, you know, I think he was going to talk to Jokers about using their unit price and trying to get parts of Chadwell Lane done that needed it up to that point. So while he was mobilized, be able to do Market Street, so. We could use some of the other $70-something thousand that we have set aside from Special Road District to get that part of it done. And then you guys still have to decide, we still have, I think, it looks like about $120,000 remaining in our reserves or our budget that we could still get a project done or some small project done yet this year. So next meeting, maybe we can think about that and look at Dave's list that he put out, what's needed, and we might be able to still get some of that done.
So good. What areas of Chadwell are you actually doing?
Um, I believe, like, from the tracks around the corner was one of the bad spots, and I think maybe on the other side of the bridge, partly up the hill. Any other business?
You're talking about the riders there. Now, there's a couple spots that I may have traveled, I guess, that, you know, maybe down the 8th or so, but it seems like you can't only miss that one, and it's going dark on Fourth Street, just right before you go down the hill there.
It's hard to miss.
It is, yeah. And I don't know if that's something that's a big deal to repair or fix, or, there's one on Market, too.
One on Ninth and Ridgeway, it's down about this far.
Yeah.
Right on the very corner where all the cars come out, drop off kids.
But I just was curious if that was a big deal.
Can you look at some of those?
Yeah, the ones that are down just about an inch? If you order a razor ring for an inch, then it makes the lid very loose and it tends to move down the track. So it's safer to leave it down if there's a bump. Otherwise, you got to excavate around the whole thing, put a new lid in frame, and basically reconstruct the top half of the manhole.
So it's not advisable to throw asphalt over, correct?
No, that's a good statement.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
Long ago where it is.
And to answer your question about the one up there on Ninth and Ridgeway?
Right.
We've measured that and it's been a while.
That's the worst one in town.
You can't, like, just shim the lid, huh?
No, the lid's only an inch thick. But if you shim the lid and it's out of the frame, then it becomes a hazard.
I mean, there would be good reason.
You could have put a plate on top of the lid.
Put a lid on top of the lid? It's a manhole lid, it is what it is.
Yeah, it is what it is, yeah.
And that's all it's ever going to be.
Honestly, if you welded two of them together, we'd have a 300-pound ton of metal.
Yeah, I know, there's a reason.
That's enough.
Thank you both. And then you'd have bolts sticking out.
Do we need to have a closed session?
Yeah, a real short closed session, yeah.
I make a motion, we go in adjournment and go into closed session.
No, you can't adjourn yet, you've got to go closed session first.
I make a motion, we go into closed session, second.
To discuss...
Uh, litigation.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rozika?
Yes.